I'd like to call the City of Richard meeting to order, May 2nd, 2018. Everybody please stand for the Pledge of Aides.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody tonight to our meeting. First item up is the open public forum. If there's anybody that wish to address the council. Seeing nobody here, we will move on to our first item up. Is the -- people have the agenda for this evening. There is no additions or corrections.
Can I make that motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Approval meeting minutes from April 4th and April 19th, 2018. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Approval of bills paid. Does anybody have any questions on any of the bills or inquiries?
They look good.
If not, I'd look for a motion.
I'll make that motion to accept the bills paid.
I'll second the motion.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consent agenda for this evening, Resolution 130-18, approval of April 2018 journal entries. Item B is Resolution 131-18, approval of 2018 and 2019 liquor licenses. Item C is Resolution 132-18, approval of 2018 and 19 tobacco licenses. Item D is Resolution 133-18, approval of ordering preparation of report on improvement. Item E is Resolution 134-18, appointment of 2018 election judges and setting a pay rate for 2018 election judge and head judge positions. Item F is SEH supplemental letter agreement for 2018 park projects. And item G is acceptance of People Services April's report. Anybody have any questions or comments on any of the?
What is Resolution 134-18? What does that have to?
We have to appoint our election judges by a certain date and this is meeting that requirement, so formality, since it's an election year.
Okay.
That way, since we do this, then we can get them all set up for training.
Do we have people that are in line to?
Yep, we've contacted all of our previous ones and they're willing to come back, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
I think the only thing is that People Services, I know, just refresh it for all the folks back home. They're having the -- this Friday, May 11th, they're going to have the Water Festival again down here at the -- city, have you read it correct, for the students? Okay. Let all the parents know that what's going on, so. Otherwise, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda, Resolution 131-18, 131-18, 132-18, 133-18, and 134-18.
And then I don't.
And then the SEH letter agreement and acceptance of the People Services April report.
I'll second it.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Tim to do the item seven.
Resolution 135-18, that's the 2018, 2019 liquor license for J&amp;S Lanes, and we will need a motion to accept that. I'll make a motion to accept that, Resolution 135-18.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
You have to do a roll call.
Right. Roll call, Mike, aye?
Aye.
Michael, Jim, Larry.
I am Steve.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Tim. Moving on to item eight, 2017 audit report, Steve Wischman from KDV. Give us our information on how the city is doing.
Great, thanks very much for your time tonight. I'm Steve Wischman, Mayor and Council. A pleasure to be here tonight. Steve Wischman from Bergen KDV in St. Cloud. Been doing audits of local governments for 30 years and been doing your audit for probably 10-plus, so again, appreciate the time tonight to go through the highlights, answer any questions you may have. And there are two documents you should have in front of you. I'm going to go through the smaller of the two first, this kind of communications letter. It's got some charts and graphs, just kind of the high-level summary presentation, if you want to say, of variety of the audit information that I'd like to present to you tonight. With that, if I can have you flip to page number three. As part of the audit process, we look at the internal controls, the accounting policies and procedures of the city. And inherently, there are some things we always report on. I have just three items this year that are consistent with prior years of internal control items we consider to be material weaknesses. They're very, very common for small cities of your size. The first one on the top of page three is just talking about audit adjustments. As part of the process and the audit procedures we do, there were three areas that we provided or proposed audit adjustments. I will mention that last year, there were several more than that, probably doubled that, so you've kind of whittled away roughly half of those adjustments that were made this year, just relating to some of the debt, some of the special assessments, and some of the related deferred revenues to that. So, thank you for the improvement, still a couple that we did, and we're hoping after a little bit of training, I think you had just here last week with a member of our team, that we can even eliminate that in the future years to have no adjustments. When you look at those types of adjustments, they are not -- they're kind of those year-end closing-type entries, and the reason I mention that is obviously, our audit tests look at to make sure that your transactions are recorded properly for the right amounts, and that's the information you get on a monthly or quarterly basis to make good budget decisions as a council. So, I wanted to let you know, there's nothing related to that that would have affected, you know, these adjustments were kind of outside that scope, just more of the year-end type of reconciliations on some of the delinquent items, things on that nature. So, again, I just wanted to mention, the information you're getting on a routine basis is, again, accurate, and you can make good, solid decisions for the city. Second one is just relating to the fact that we prepare your financial statements, that big book, that second book that I'll go through very briefly. More of as a convenience, you know, it takes a lot of time and would be take a lot of time internally for you to do that, since we audit, you know, almost 200 local governments in over 75 cities, we get pretty good at doing that, and just as a convenience, we do that. So, that's really all that means. The last one on the bottom of page three is just talking about segregation of accounting duties. And just due to the very limited number of people that you have doing, looking at the various transactions, recording those, processing those, having custody of, you know, the cash and the receipts and those types of things, there are those, you know, five or six inherent limitations that we have listed. We're not recommending you change anything from a cost-benefit standpoint. You've looked and said, you know, this is an effective internal controls, it's not perfect. In order to eliminate or reduce those comments, you'd need to hire more staff, and that's just, from a cost-benefit, isn't practical for your city. And again, we would concur with that. So, again, the fact that you received the bills tonight, you looked at those, asked if there were any questions, that's a great internal control, so you're kind of part of that as well, that internal control process. So, again, continue to do that, ask those good questions, but again, recommending that you do not change anything in your internal controls. And again, 100% of the cities your size that we work with will receive that same comment, so. Required communication starts on page five, that goes through page eight. Just in summary, there's nothing out of the ordinary here. Just talks about the audit process, there were no disagreements or no difficulties in the audit process. Again, thanks to Tessa and Cindy and the team for getting ready for us, having the information available, being efficient with it, and et cetera. So, that's really all I need to say on those pages. Starting on page nine, then is some financial analysis. It focuses on a couple of areas. Number one, kind of your tax capacities, it also looks at the general fund, then it looks at your enterprise funds, water, sewer, and arena funds, so that's the major kind of operational funds of the city, if you want to say. For, on page nine, the tax capacity rate for 2017 actually did decline almost one percentage point from about 72.49% down to 71.60%. As you can see, that is the lowest of the five years presented of 2013 through 2016. You know, really what that is, is just a barometer of kind of that tax burden, if you want to say, based on your tax capacity. And if you look at page 10 then, that really is just that calculation, a little bit more information. The lower bar, or the darker on the left-hand side, is the tax levy for the city in total, and then the tax capacity is the higher bar. And as you can see, over the five years, your tax levy has remained frozen at $614,000, which is excellent. Your tax capacity has continued to grow, for this year was $857,711, up about $10,000 from 2016, and the highest of the five years presented. So, continued investment, tax capacity growth, and the city kind of helps that burden on the taxpayers in total. And again, keep in mind that when the taxpayer of the city receives that tax bill, it includes the city share, the school district share, the county share, and any other special districts as well. So, this is really only a component of that. But, looking at it, tax levy, very consistent over the period, continued growth in your tax capacity, your tax base, certainly positive trends for the city. Page 11 then looks at the general fund, and the general fund, again, is the major operating fund of the city. And for 2017, revenues in the general fund totaled $950,637. That was about a $77,000 increase, or about 9%. Expenditures were $837,000, or about 60, up about $64,000, or 8% from last year. As you can see, that revenues did exceed expenditures, which added to your fund balance of approximately $113,000 after other transfers and other collections. So, your fund balance at the end of 2017 in the general fund, $1,642,684. So, again, just a slight increase, but again, the highest level over that five-year period. If you look above on page 11 in the narrative, it does talk a little bit about fund balance levels, the second paragraph. So, you're at about 23 and a half months of your expenditures. You're conservative on your spending, and again, keeps that percentage higher than, you know, the average on the state, but certainly not excessive. And actually, we had a brief discussion at our meeting a few weeks ago, just about some of the potential planned uses for some of the general fund. What it does is it gives you some flexibility in internally funding some of those projects if you so desire, without incurring, you know, debt, and I know there's a variety of projects coming on that could, you know, tap into that a little bit, so I just want to let you know, you do have the flexibility to use some of those funds, if desired, as you kind of look at your plans and look at the funding mechanisms for those types of projects within the city. Briefly on page 12, general fund revenues, this just breaks out, again, the total revenues. I mentioned there about $950,000 for 2017. Of that, about $459,000 was comprised of property taxes and some tax increments, that's up about $21,000. The next largest is your intergovernmental revenues, that's at $335,108, up about $15,000, local government aids, some of those state replacement aids. And then the third one relating to is miscellaneous, that increased about $36,000, up to $101,913. That one is a little bit out of line, if you want to say, for 2017 because of the fire relief, closing their gambling accounts and donating about $36,000 to the city, so that's why that kind of spiked in 2017, just wanted to note that. Otherwise, it would have been very consistent to 2016. For page 13 then, when you look at that general fund revenues and say, okay, for every dollar we get, what percentage comes from property taxes, what comes from intergovernmental, et cetera? And if we compare 2017 to 2016, one barometer, one source we look at is just looking at the total revenues of, or excuse me, the property taxes and the intergovernmental revenues, and that was about 83.6% of every dollar is from those two sources. That is a little bit lower than last year, that was at 86.9% or 86.9 cents on the dollars. But again, just a couple percentage points, up and down, the biggest change is actually in the miscellaneous because of that, the gambling funds that were received, so that was up about 3%. Everything else kind of ratcheted back a percent or two. So, again, very, very consistent, exactly as we would expect to see for your city. Page 14 looks at expenditures then in the general fund. As I mentioned, the general fund expenditures for 2017 were about $837,000. We break it into the various components, general government, public safety, public works, park and recreation, and then capital outlay. Major difference this year was in your capital outlay. And overall, the expenditures increased about $63,000, and actually, all of that, and even more, $109,000 was a result of capital outlay for shelter project and then some fire department equipment that was purchased this year. Otherwise, parks and rec was up about $22,000. Public works actually declined about $65,000 for some extra expenses last year due to some storm cleanup. And then the public safety was up only about $10,000. So, again, very, very consistent. The big outlier is just the capital outlay, kind of a capital-intensive year for 2017. So, as a result of that, on page 15, you would expect to see that piece of the pie grow significantly, and again, it's up 13 percentage points, from just under 1% to 13.9%. Everything else correspondingly, kind of got a little bit smaller piece of the pie, but again, very consistent when you factor out that capital outlay increase for 2017. One other thing as auditors, we look at is just the budget in actual, and on page 16 is a summary of kind of what your final budget was, what your actual amounts were, and the variances there. Total receipts exceeded the budget by $113,896, or about 13.3%, 13.6%. The majority of the increase, or the overages, was in the miscellaneous due to the gambling receipts, et cetera. The intergovernmental was also $21,000 higher for just some aids that weren't budgeted for. And then expenditure-wise, you were $107,000 over your budget, or about 14.7%. All of that in the capital outlay. So, again, just kind of a timing when the budget, what your budget for, what actually was expended. But again, being that the receipts were over and the disbursements were over, you would projected a bottom-line fund balance change of $106,000, and actually came in at $113,000, so you're only $6,000 off, you know, on your bottom-line increase. So, that's excellent. So, I just wanted to point that out, very nice job on the managing that bottom line or that fund balance increase. Shift gears a little bit and talk about the enterprise funds. Again, we have the water sewer and the arena fund. For 2017, the water fund revenues increased about $13,000 to just over $300,000. Your operating expenses, about $160,000, that was about $60,000 lower than last year. And there were some repairs needed last year for some storm damage. So, it did have a more positive year, if you want to say, more in line with 2015, 2014, 2013. So, again, the cash balance remained very stable in that fund after the debt service requirements of about $91,000, and covered, again, the depreciation expense in the water fund. So, overall, on page 18 then, just looks at kind of summarizing the revenues, expenses, those non-operating items, and then he did have a transfer out for some debt service of $156,000. Overall, the net position remained relatively consistent from 2 million, started at $2,580,000 and ended at $2,400,000. As I mentioned, cash balance is about $426,000 in the water fund, so not all of that net position is in cash, invested in the equipment and the infrastructure of the water fund. So, again, good, stable year for the water fund. Page 19 looks at the sewer or wastewater fund. Revenues were flat, $337,000. Operating expenses did increase just about $8,500 to $420,000. Did have a loss, including depreciation, which is consistent with the other years presented, so you're funding about 60% of your depreciation expense. And the cash balance actually did grow in the sewer fund a little bit to about $875,000, and that includes debt service, cash payments of about $307,000 for principal and interest. So, overall, sewer fund operated in a good, stable, positive manner. When you look then on page 20, that just recaps the revenues, the expenses, and some of the non-operating items. And the net position, again, went down just a little bit from $5,408,000 to $5,347,000. And the main reason, the depreciation expense is a little higher amount in the sewer fund, more infrastructure needed there than the water, and as a result of that, that charge is a little bit bigger to the sewer fund than the water fund. But, again, all things looking very stable and, you know, very consistent, so. Arena fund, last fund to cover here, and then I'll flip in the big book for just a couple minutes and show you about three or four pages. Again, very consistent operation, operating revenues were up about $3,000, $163,000. Operating expenses, $217,000. There was a loss with depreciation, but adding back depreciation, a small gain there. So, again, very, very consistent operations there, nothing really to comment on too much. And page 22, just then recaps that as well, those revenues and expenses, and looks at your beginning and ending net position, just down slightly because of depreciation from $1,586 to $1,535. So, again, very stable operations there, and I think that's, you know, something that you can certainly be, is certainly a positive. Couple emerging issues, we'll work through with Tessa on the couple new statements that are coming on board, just relating to some other post-employment benefits and then some new lease standards. Nothing to really talk at the council level about at this time, but again, they're always adding new requirements for us, and we'll make sure we're on top of that, so we get it implemented appropriately for your city. Pause for just a second, see if you have any questions at this point. If not, I'll just literally take two minutes and just show you where the opinion is in the big book, so if you want to grab the larger book now, we'll flip to pages, flip to page two. Pages two, three, and four is our independent auditors' report on the official financial statements. This is the book that goes to the state auditor, the state reporting form, you know, gets captured in their system as well. So, again, two, three, and four is our opinion, just talks about what management's responsibility is, what our auditor's responsibility. And briefly, I'd like to say, Tessa and her team capture the transactions on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, reconcile that on a routine basis, capture it all, the annual information to us, we gather that information, and we do our test work, confirmation of numbers with the counties, with the banks, testing of those transactions to make sure it's in the right fund for the right amount, right approvals, those kind of things. And that all checked out great, and as a result, on the top of page three, our opinion, first paragraph is a clean or unmodified opinion on the financial statements. So, in our opinion, the statements are fairly presented in accordance with all the standards. Other information in the back receives the appropriate level of audit assurance there, so nothing to report there, any anomalies as well. If you read nothing in this book, I recommend you read pages five through 14, that's the management's discussion and analysis, it is written by management, it talks about the financial highlights, those six, five, six bullet points there on page five, but it also looks at some comparative information. Again, very good information and good reading, it should be consistent with what I talked about with the general fund, the enterprise funds, et cetera. I know one of the items we look at is just, on page 17 is your overall, this is the overall statement of net position. Lots of numbers here, this is the long-term summarized look of the financial health of the city. As you can see, in total, excluding the Economic Development Authority, total assets are about $22 million, including capital assets. Total liabilities, about $9.2 million, which is down about $550,000 from the debt payments, so going in the right direction there. Net position overall is that investment in your capital plus your reserves in the various funds, whether in cash or receivables, et cetera. $12.7 million unrestricted of $3.5 million, which is about what your cash and investment balance is citywide, so again, very consistent there. Probably the one big thing I would just like to answer is, a lot of times they'll say, well, did our financial condition improve or deteriorate or stay the same? Overall, all the funds, long-term. If you look at page 19, in the third column, which is titled total, third from the bottom number, you see a $187,397 number. That is your net increase, if you want to say, in your net position. So, the city is financially better off at the end of 17 than it was at the beginning, taking into account all the long-term assets, liabilities, depreciation, by that $187,000, so going in the right direction there. That was actually about, up from about $105,000 in 2016, so again, incrementally even getting a little bit better. So, the city indeed is better off, and I think that as a council, it's good for you to know, you know, take all the various funds, whether it's the general fund, the water fund, sewer fund, any of the debt service or project funds, and again, better off in total. So, congratulations for the good fiscal management of the city funds. The other page I wanted to just point out is on page 58, and I know you may have heard a bit about the pension liability that gets allocated to all the local governments in Minnesota for the PERA. It's a fairly small number for your city, it's the third number, third column in, it's about $197,902 allocated to the city. That is not a number or a liability that you have to write a check for, you are statutorily required to make your employer match of 7.5% on your employee's payroll. You fully comply with that, which is the bottom part of that page, about $15,598 was paid for that particular match. So, this is just really a barometer on the top as to the health, if you want to say, of the PERA plan, and the very last column on the top of page 58 kind of shows that percentage of funding of the total liability, and for 2017, that number was 75.9%. That is actually better than last year's 68.9%. So, PERA plan in general is going in the right direction, I just thought that would be a quick comment to make, so you kind of can understand where that particular number is, what your overall liability is, and just that required match, and where you can find more information if you want. My final comments on pages 75 and 77, there's two reports in the back, one that talks about compliance with government auditing standards. That again is another layer of standards that we're required to follow because you receive state and federal funding. And again, there was nothing to report as far as compliance with government auditing standards. When you look at the internal control over financial reporting, those are the comments that I already made in the first book on the very front end, preparation of financial statements, audit adjustments, and then the segregation of duties. So, those are just repeat items there. Finally, on page 77, the Office of the State Auditor provides to all us CPA firms in Minnesota a guide that we're required to test statute, compliance with statutes. Variety of things we look at, bids and quotes, collateralization of deposits, claims and disbursements, making sure you're following applicable statutes. And the second from the bottom paragraph, there was, nothing came to our attention to believe that you failed to comply with those provisions, so everything checked out fine there. So, I just wanted to show you where, kind of where some of that information is that we test, and that based on our test work, you complied with those provisions. So, congratulations for that. Thank you for being diligent and following the rules. It's, again, it's about an 80, 90-page document that we have to test a variety of things, so. I wanted to just say, overall, financially and compliance-wise, everything looks very, very good, so. So, that's just a real summary, 15 minutes of it. I know there's a lot of information there. I'm very happy to jump into any more detail, if you'd like, on any or any questions that you have, happy to answer those at this time. And I'll just close with that and say thank you for your time today, and thanks for the opportunity to be here and provide the audit services to you.
Steve, I do have a question for you. You talked about compliance, we've had a couple projects we've tried doing, and we'll get one bid, and we have a hard time finding another person to bid the job because, like certain jobs we have done right now, one company knows they're going to get the bid every time because they always come in lower, the other company won't even bid it anymore. So, we're running into that problem of how do you get the second bid if, I mean, when you got to go outside this area to go further away just to get somebody to come in and give a bid that they know they're not going to get the job anyway, you know, in theory because they're going to be higher priced. How do you keep in compliance when, you know, we're coming into that issue on some of our?
Yeah, the high level of the statutes is you need to obviously advertise for bids for that particular project. If you only receive one bid, you are allowed by statute to accept that bid, it's just a matter of making sure you follow those notification requirements, you know, the advertisements and those types of things. Yeah, there, it is a fairly common, I don't want to say issue, but item that we see is that you'll issue bids for a project, and you will have one, maybe two, and as a result, you may or may not get the results you want. You also always do have the option to rebid as well, if you do find that the one bid if you do find that the one bid is, you know, not complying with whatever statutes or whatever standards you have put in your advertisement for bids. I know the one thing we've seen is they're sometimes reaching out a little further into how they advertise for those bids. So you do get maybe one or two or three bids. So that's just an option to look at as well. Maybe go from a more of a local region to a, you know, just a little bit further out as far as, you know, advertising radius. But very common, as long as you follow, you know, the particular advertisement for those bids, you know, in 10 days to two weeks out and advertise it. That's technically what you need to do. And I don't know if that really answered your question. It is kind of inherent to the whole project itself that sometimes you get.
We also have some projects that we're not required to go get bids because they're smaller projects.
Correct.
But then we still have the same issue of trying to get, you know, trying to make sure they do apples to apples. So we're not, I mean, to be, for us to be fair to developer, to anybody that's putting a bid in, you want it the same. Well, we don't always get the same. And sometimes things get to be a time crunch of it has to be done, you know, and you don't have that time due.
And two comments, you're exactly right. There are thresholds where you don't have to bid it. If it's, you know, over that 100,000, then obviously do. But if it's smaller than that, you know, quotes are acceptable. You ultimately have the authority as council to look at the quotes and say, this one does not comply with the quote that we asked for, whatever, you know, the specifications, the timing, whatever it would be. As long as you document why you picked the one you did because, you know, this one we're not accepting because the, it didn't meet the specifications, that would be the information we'd be looking for from an auditor's perspective to, you know, just to document why you selected the one you did if one of them was not in compliance with your overall specifications.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
At this time, so Steve, you said we went from seven to three this year? Is that, I mean, everything is?
Yeah, the audit adjustments. I think we had six or seven areas that we adjusted in 2016 down to about three. And actually, the assessments and the deferred revenues, that's kind of a, it's two different numbers on the statements, but it's kind of one process. So we actually provided a little bit of training that I think we can knock that down to.
I think we'll be able to knock them all.
I think we can get them all done for 2017.
That was my next one. So Tessa and the team have been working to make sure to correct it. So yeah, I've had no problem with that at all.
Exactly. And that, you know, we appreciate that to say, you know, take that, take that one step to get half of them done. Say, you know what, how about a little bit of training so that we know exactly what we're looking for when it comes to audit time? And that would be the goal, to have zero for 2017.
These three that we've got now, we've basically had those for a long time.
We've been adjusting those for a number of years, correct. And it is the county year-end reconciliation of the special assessments. There's a lot of prepays, there's some abatements and just a lot of moving parts. And you don't really know where they all shake out until you get all those county reports about February of the following year. So it was really just more of a process about where to find all that information so we get it all reconciled right. So, but you are correct that that's been an area that we've been assisting with for a number of years. And it's not uncommon at all. But again, you've taken the initiative to say, you know, let us take the shot in 2018. Let's not have that as an adjustment and we'll shorten up that document by a couple of paragraphs. And that'd be great.
Good. Well, thank you for working with us. We appreciate it.
That's our pleasure. You know what, we appreciate the willingness to take that training step. And obviously, we're always here to help with questions that you have. There's unique things that come up, transactions and things when debt is issued and refunded and things. And, you know, we do a lot of cities in the state and we're certainly willing to help, to take a look at it and say, what would you, how do you reconcile this throughout the year? So just reach out to us at any time, we're happy. Thank you.
Really?
I thought I had it on.
I like it.
I was wondering what was going on.
At this time, consideration of resolution 136-18, approving of 2017 audit report.
I'll make that motion to accept that. I'll second it.
Anybody have any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. Thank you for the.
Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Have a great night.
Very educational.
Let us know how we can help.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll move on to council report. We'll move on to the EDA, Mike.
With the EDA, we had a person apply for the enhancement fund. We had one person apply for the revolving fund loan. We're working on those, get them through. And we also met with the civic in Congress about updating the brochures that we have available around from the city of Richmond. We're going to work on that through the summer. Other than that, we have pretty much our same, trying to contact new businesses and stuff as we're going to go through the summer here. And about it. Our next meeting is moved to May 8th at 6:30. Other than that, that's nothing really to touch on till we get a little bit further, I guess. Let you know what's going on.
Does anybody have any questions for Mike on EDA? About the planning commission?
We did not have a meeting this month. We're looking at, we'll probably have to change a little bit of that for next month, May 2. We had nothing that came up that was going on right now. So hopefully, we'll have some good information starting in May, hopefully, again, for some more things.
I think it's going to be a good summer.
Yeah, I think it is too.
Yeah, it's looking that way anyways.
And then, and then we didn't have a recording trail meeting either this week. That's still nothing going on there, so.
Still hoping for funding.
Yep, that's what we're doing. We're just waiting for answers back, so.
I'm going to take one step back. For the public, if anybody wants to come and look at these books, you know, that Steve went through, there are copy up here at all times. The only thing is, is we only have one copy that stays up here. So if you want to review them, you need to come up here. You can, they'll give you the books. You can't take them home. You can sit here and look at them. You can look through the numbers if you want to understand the city's financial statements. They'll be up here. They're open to the public. It's just that they're not accessible to take home because there's only one copy that stays here at City Hall for viewing. So I just want to make that so if somebody wants to come and look at them, they're available. Every one of the council members have one. If you can convince one of us to come and share them with you, that's fine also. But we all like to keep our copies as well because this gives us an idea where we're sitting with different funds and different things so we understand where we're at. So other matters of concern for this evening. May 19th, Richmond Fire Relief Association is having their 55 Bike Run. Registration starts at 7:30 on the 19th out at Centennial Park. There is also going to be a band, hopefully in the new band shelter if it's done on time. And they will be serving food and other beverages out there during the band. I'm not sure what time it plays at.
It's 12 to 3?
I believe it's.
Between 12 and 3. They'll probably be playing from 1 to 3.
I believe it's going to be 12 to 3 somewhere in that time. There should be more information coming out here shortly.
Newsletter. That's being mailed out tomorrow. It'll all be in the newsletter for tomorrow, so.
And otherwise, our next meeting is May 9th. Can't be May 19th.
May 17th.
May 17th. Two mistakes on it tonight.
I'll stick on 19. I'll stick on the May 19th.
Our next meeting is May 17th at 6:30 here at City Hall. Is there anything else to add, gentlemen?
I just wanted to say I appreciate Tessa taking the time to sit with me and go over this audit report today because it made a lot, I mean, it was a lot, there's a lot of information in there. And I also appreciate Gordy, I went on Gordy's little trip around town for about an hour. He looked at all the things that were, all these 2018, 2019 projects, ongoing projects. There's a lot to do out there. But it was nice to go around and see all that stuff. Because, you know, you know it's out there, but you just never really know exactly where it's at. So I appreciate that.
And the other reminder is, if you're walking your dog, please pick up after them. We've had a few complaints, so I'm just reminding people.
And now the compost is open. Make sure when you go out there, you try to keep your brush on one side and the grass on the other. And please take your bags with you. Do not throw the whole bag in there. You cannot get ground up and taken care of from there. Please, if you do that, take the bag home with you.
Anything else?
That's all I got.